Meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in the response to the COVID-19 outbreak restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less, and all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19, the Mayor of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting on September 8th, 2020, the City Council may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the City Council participating in the August -- well, that's wrong. September 8th, 2020, City Council meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified, which I just did, and determined that they can hear one another, they can hear all of the discussion and testimony during the meeting. That having been said, I will ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Park?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Karimis?
Here.
Leader? Absent. Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Hayhoe?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. I ask that you all rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. On to Agenda Item Three. Receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications they was to submit? Any written communications?
I have to speak.
Okay. That comes next. So if you don't have anything written, that's what we're checking on first. So nothing written. So that closes Agenda Item Three. Agenda Item Four. Public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that when you get to the microphone, you identify yourself. Your address is optional. We ask that you direct your comments specifically to the Chair. Out of respect for work that we have to get done here this evening, and respect for others who may want to speak, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. If you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. At this time, Clerk Tamer, do we have anybody who has signed up for our sign-in sheet?
Yes, Mayor. Saleem Dawood?
Sir, is that you?
Yes, it's me, sir.
Great. Please approach the microphone, state your name, and the floor is yours.
Hello. Yeah, this is Dawood Saleem. I am from a small store business in Elmhurst, that's 697 North York Road. I have some grievances. I want to let all the council members, the Mayor, and everybody know that. We, in our businesses here, we cannot sell any glass pipes or water pipes and whatever. That's what we've been told. But when we approached the city office, they said that they have to be an amendment done, and you have to come and give a representation in front of the council. But when I went and approached the different offices of different government offices, and also I called the governor's office, they said they have no objection because selling marijuana has become legal now, and they've already given permission to sell it in pharmacies. But we don't want that. We only want to have a little business of selling the glass pipes and the water pipes in this area. As our neighbors in Irving Park, North Lake, and others are all doing that, and we are losing business. With this pandemic, we are already losing a lot of business, and we are not in a effort to run the business. So with all this, we need your support, and without your support, we just can't even prolong the business anymore. So this is my request. I just don't know what more to say. That's it. That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public forum, so it's not a conversation.
I know. I understand, yes.
But we'll have somebody get back to you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Clerk Tamer, anyone else?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who hasn't had an opportunity to sign in but wishes to address the council at this time? Mr. Trezine? You good? All right. That's it for public forum. On to announcements. Agenda Item Five. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Mulliner.
Just want to announce that the American Legion is doing a car show again, and it's every Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00. We'll go through October with the car show, just so that people are aware. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements from the dais? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda at this time. Is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed to provide further comment or vote no? Alderman Toledo?
6.20.
Alderman Bram?
6.19.
Anyone else? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.10, please.
6.10. Anyone else? Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 6.10, 6.13, 6.19, and 6.20. Motion by Alderman Toledo. Yes, Alderman Toledo. Point of order, you mean to say?
Thank you. I thought there were -- where did 6.13 slide in there?
That's because I had my own personal note on there before the meeting, and I'm going to take that right off of there.
Oh, okay.
So let me back up. I will now entertain -- thank you. I was just testing. Alderman Toledo. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 6.10, 6.19, 6.20. Motion by Alderman Toledo. Second by Alderman Dunn. Clerk Tamer.
Bram? Palmski?
Aye.
Karimis?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner? Aye. Deuter?
Aye.
Hayhoe?
Aye.
Leader? Absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Point of order?
Yes.
Is this the correct roll call order?
In terms of rotating wards? What's -- I'm happy to entertain the point of order, which specifically, do you think it's out of order?
She's probably right. I'm seeing it. When we were in executive session and when we did the initial attendance--
Good question.
She's right. I just know I'm seeing it.
Do you have a form you can use?
Let me see if that was included. The roll call was correct. The roll call was.
Yep.
We're starting with Park, right?
Right.
Okay. Park?
Okay, hold on. We have to do it again. No, I just want to state what we're doing.
Okay.
So it's not -- the vote's not official until the chairman recognizes the vote, and we've had a point of order that normally, for Mr. Trezine and everyone else in the audience, we rotate when we call roll by ward, correct?
We do. That was a system that was established when Clerk Spencer--
Yes. So Alderman noted that we are calling it out of order. We're back to -- I'm going to recall the vote, and we're going to call it on the rotation that we're supposed to have for this meeting. Clear?
We're starting with Ward Five, right? I have two different Ward Fives, so we're starting--
Starting with Ward Five. So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 6.10, 6.19, and 6.20, and now we'll call the vote again.
Okay. Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Karimis?
Aye.
Leader? Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Hayhoe?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus items 6.10, 6.19, and 6.20. On to Agenda Item 6.10. Mr. Kennedy, before I have the clerk read it, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to pull that back to Public Works and Buildings to work on it some more, please.
Okay. So as a courtesy, we allow the chairman to pull that back. We are pulling back Agenda Item 6.10. On to 6.19. This is an ordinance. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to Section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6.
Okay. To put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Mulliner.
No comment. This is just a continuation of the executive order to allow you to use powers necessary when needed.
Okay. Alderman Bram, you pulled this.
Yes, thank you. As in previous meetings, I do not feel and have not seen any evidence that there is a need to continue this extension of executive power, so I will not be--
Okay. Any additional comments? Clerk Tamer?
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Karimis?
Aye.
Leader? Absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
Hayhoe?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.19 is approved. On to 6.20, which is an ordinance. I ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and implementing a loan agreement between the city of Elmhurst and Virginia Lane Townhomes Inc.
Okay. To put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Levin. Alderman Toledo, you pulled this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take an opportunity to clarify. There was a clean version or a changed version of the ordinance that was posted after Thursday, and so I just wanted to take an opportunity to just explain to the council that basically an incorrect version was posted inadvertently originally on board docs. The council received both a clean revised correct version as well as a redlined version of the correct version, so that you could see any changes from the incorrectly posted one. And I would just wanted to also say that normally I would defer and wait until the next council meeting to approve something like this, just to give everyone ample time to review, you know, the differences, although they are -- sorry. Give everyone time to review the differences. In this case, I didn't want to do that because we're talking about a roof replacement for Virginia Lane Townhomes, and as everyone has noted, the weather changed over the last day. There's not a lot of time left for them to get that roof replacement taken care of before the winter, and it is really imperative for the health of some of those residents to get this roof fixed. All aspects of the original report that the committee and the council approved in the last city council meeting are represented in the clean version of the ordinance. So I just wanted to point those things out, and I ask for everyone's support. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? Alderman Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad this was pulled because I did have a question on it. It appears in the redlined version, or in my case, the purple-lined version. The insurance rider was struck from the requirement, and I'm wondering, just, I didn't see anything that covered the city in case we would invest $225,000 in a new roof, and that building should happen to run into a problem, burned down. God forbid the people not be able to pay the annual assessment to cover that. I just want to ensure that we do have some type of risk coverage for that.
Alderman Toledo?
Yeah. The reason why the $5 million insurance was struck is because -- and why you'll see Item G, where we want to establish a homeowners' association, these are all individual properties, so they don't have the ability to collect their property together and get a significant insurance policy that covers the entire building. As far as kind of our ability to protect our investment or the loan and getting the loan paid back, because this is an SSA, and this is a -- you know, we're providing the taxing authority for these folks to tax themselves. We can ensure that we recover the funds through the SSA levy.
I think the payout is structured over six years, so should there be a problem between now and then, the city would fall short on the collection. So I -- if I'd be concerned if there was no coverage in that type of loan. This agreement and arrangement with this community is a bit odd. It's an apartment complex, and we're paying for maintenance of it. So -- and I'm glad to see that section added, that within two years, they will establish a homeowners' association. But I -- it sounds like we don't. We don't have coverage if that should -- if something should happen. With a sidewalk, it's usually not an issue. Those things don't usually degrade too much, or the whole sidewalk doesn't implode in 10 years that the residents are paying for it. But, you know, I would suggest that we might consider adding that.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. As Alderman Toledo has stated, I think the concerns that Alderman Dunn has of our, I guess, liability in this case of this loan, and how it ties to the improvement of this townhome complex, being the roofs, would be covered by the SSA. So I personally don't feel that there's any liability exposure or risk to the city of Elmhurst, since this is going through an SSA process. And as Alderman Dunn stated in his last statements, and I just want to clarify, in this proposed ordinance, it doesn't say that within two years it's mandated that they have a homeowners' association, that it states that they make every -- I forgot the legalese and how it's phrased in here, but make every attempt to establish a homeowners' association. There was significant discussion of that point. We had representation from the Board of the Virginia Townhomes, being the treasurer. I don't know, I don't think the president was able to make it, but a couple of the elected positions have attended our meetings, and I think the message was well-received that we would like to, as Alderman Dunn said, move away from this type of agreement, because it is unusual that we are essentially playing the role, we being the city, is playing the role of a townhome association. So I will speak for myself that I would like to see that sooner than later, to move away from this agreement and them establish it. But we couldn't go as far as saying that they must establish a homeowners' association due to what we believe to be the steps. For that to happen would be 100% in favor from every property owner, and I forgot the numbers, but I want to say it was 54, somewhere in the 50s of number of townhomes in that complex. So it would be difficult, but we are pushing hard to say you guys need to make every effort to establish that, and therefore, hopefully in the very near future, go away from this agreement and go to what I would call a stereotypical agreement of a townhome association versus the city of Elmhurst loan/SSA.
Any additional comments? Clerk Tamer?
Park? Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Karimis?
Aye.
Leader? Absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Hayhoe?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.20 is approved. On to reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. So a couple things. First, we are having, as we do every year, 9/11 has been established, I think since 2001, as Patriot Day. And we will be observing Patriot Day, but due to the concerns with COVID, we will be hosting a virtual 9/11 ceremony. I don't see it on our website, City Manager, but I assume it will be posted shortly.
It was in the e-newsletter.
In the e-newsletter.
It will be posted shortly.
So if you hunt for it, you can find it, and we will be posting the details. But on 9/11, we will be hosting a virtual 9/11 ceremony in remembrance of those folks who lost their lives that day, in an observation of Patriot Day. In addition, we are coming to the end of our census counting. So we -- census counting in the city of Elmhurst has to be wrapped up by the end of this month, September 30th. So we actually have enumerators going door-to-door. Last I heard, we were over 80%. Jim, do you know what that is right now? 82, maybe 83%?
I think we hit 83%.
83% counted, but September's not over, and the census is so very important to the city of Elmhurst because so many of the federal programs and dollars that we qualify for are based on the actual census. So we're doing everything we can to get an accurate count in Elmhurst. If you have any questions, you can certainly call City Hall. Residents may still respond online or by phone up until September 30th. So please do what you can to make sure that you are reporting. There are direct links on elmhurst.org, and you can also call City Hall, and they can walk you through the process if you have any questions. Okay. I'm going to clean my glasses for this. I have another item I'm going to read. It's a little unusual, but I'm going to read this on behalf of my friend, Alderman Leader. "A funny thing has happened to me on my road to a fifth term. I have suddenly come face to face with that margin of mystery where all of our careful calculations collapse. For the experience of being an Elmhurst alderman has seemed to become a life's possession. Leaving public office after 16 years is to die a little. I will miss the excitement and challenges, intellectual and even bigger emotional. Teddy Roosevelt said that the best prize life has to offer is the chance to perform work worth doing. Here clearly was work worth doing. A city, like a person, cannot go backwards. A standard once set must be maintained and improved upon. We must meet the present and the future without fear and with a sense of permanence and confidence. This government in Elmhurst is ours. It doesn't belong to anybody but the people of Elmhurst. Don't treat it as an impersonal thing. Don't treat it as something to sneer at. Treat it as something that belongs to you. I don't care how much you criticize it or to what faction you belong. Just remember that this city of Elmhurst belongs to you and needs you, and it takes brains and skill to run it. In my time, I have served with a great many colleagues, and most, if not all, had just that, brains and skill. Oh, true. Occasionally, I had the sense that some of the discussions sounded like propositions from Alice in Wonderland, or to belong more comfortably in the region of the occult." Trying to imitate my best Norm Leader. "And there were some, very few, however honest of intent, that did injury to Elmhurst, and some, on and off the diest, demanded of us what we can't do and rejected everything we can do and have done. Yes, from time to time, we differed with each other as to what ought to be done, but after all, we followed the same vision. After all, we worked slowly, stumbling through the dark and doubtful passages onward to a common purpose and a common ideal. The other side of the picture is that this has been a fascinating experience. It is worth any amount of time and energy to have had a seat in the skybox at this show. Democracy and good government work in Elmhurst because we intend it shall work. We have had the habit, first of all, of tolerance, and secondly, of submitting to the will of the majority, and thirdly, of respecting the rights of the minority. It is always necessary that we should act in the right spirit. That means never acting in a spirit of hostility. It is easy to condemn, but that does not bring progress or solutions. In Elmhurst, there is one rule for everyone, and that is the common interest. Good government is a matter of compromise and tolerance, and everyone is welcome to come to the discussion. I will never know anything like these many years again. The future is uncertain for me. Indeed, if the truth were realized for all of us. In our long journey through life, we picture to ourselves a variety of pleasant halts. A few more mile -- a few miles more, and the workday will be ended, and then will come the hour of warmth and wine at 5:00. But in time's continuous flow, the past is a dream and the future mysterious. There is only now. Life is an education, so now I'm beginning a new adventure. By the side of the everlasting Y, there is a yes. A transitory yes, if you like, but a yes. I am at the top of the last rise, looking down that road running long and straight to that magical place where the land meets the water. My wife and I have spent some of our best years in Elmhurst, best years of our lives in Elmhurst. We are leaving, but we will always carry that experience with us as a precious gift, a movable beast. It is impossible in this short time to thank all of my friends without inadvertently sliding some of my friends, but you all know who you are. So goodbye, good luck, and thank you all. Thank you to all, past and present. Especially thank you to Elmhurst. So it's with sadness and regret that I have accepted Alderman Leader's resignation from his position. He and Leslie have moved. I have the good fortune of talking to Alderman, well, now Citizen Norm Leader. Quite often, he's doing well. He wishes you all the best. I think that -- I know this was a surprise to some of you, and I don't want to, what I'll say, eulogize Alderman Leader right now, or eulogize his service. Let's not get ahead of ourselves. I don't want to eulogize his service, if you will, tonight, impromptu. So at another meeting, we'll have just maybe a formal way to say goodbye to Norm. I'm not sure we can talk him back into coming, but we're going to try. So anyway, I did my -- that's my best Norm Leader impression, but clearly he is much more eloquent than I could ever be, and as I said, Alderman Leader has resigned. There'll be a press release at some point this week. We're going to follow the same process we always follow when there is an open seat, and that is basically an open roll call, and details will be forthcoming. And that's it for me. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Not sure how to follow that.
Oh! Well, let me just cut you off then.
Okay.
The police forum that we spoke about, and I mentioned it during my last report two weeks ago, we are entertaining two dates, and one conflict we could not move, but the other we could. So we are having our Elmhurst Police Department Forum on Tuesday, September 29th, from 6:00 to 7:30. It'll be live on our YouTube page, and there are more details forthcoming. City Manager, over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things. Over the weekend, we experienced a number of water main breaks. We had a firewall device in our system go bad, and so that caused the system to kind of go into self-preservation mode, is what I call it. And because of that, some pressures increased in certain areas, and we had six main breaks at one time. We were fortunate that our crews were out on it very quickly, and had all of the repairs done by Saturday night, which was amazing. And I'm happy to say that all of the lab results came in by Monday, and everything came out fine the way that we had hoped it would. There were no boil orders, long-term boil orders issued, so I do want to say thank you to the crews that came out on the holiday weekend to help fix those. The breaks and repairs were kind of focused in the center and southern part of town, for whatever reason. We are working with Concentric, who is the SCADA provider, to figure out what happened. We do have a piece, we had that piece replaced on Saturday, so the system is working fine, but we're trying to get to the root cause of that. So, and I appreciate the residents' patience in, during this, while we, while we did all those repairs. The other item I have is, we have plenty of free wood chips at the Butterfield, at Butterfield Park near the water tower. You can imagine, from all the branch collecting that we did and chipping, we do have free wood chips. All you can take. So please come down to the Butterfield Park Water Tower with some empty garbage cans and fill them up.
Fantastic. Okay. Any other reports or recommendations from elected officials? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make the council and the public aware of a discussion that is underway at the Public Affairs and Safety Committee. About a month ago, city council heard public comment from a number of residents. They told their stories, presented data related to increasing diversity in Elmhurst and DuPage County, identified things they wished were different, and made suggestions for potential improvements. These comments were brought forward during a time that, as a nation, we are working through events that have brought attention to racial inequality. Nationally, there is a growing consensus that we can do better. Although the country is looking closely at these issues because of events in other places, there is a portion of our residents who want to examine issues related to race in the context of our community. Because the city of Elmhurst is a critical component of our community, I think we should embrace these discussions, listen, and work diligently to identify areas of improvement. No matter how well we are doing, there is always room for improvement. Over the past two PANS committee meetings, the committee agreed to begin a series of discussions focused on diversity and inclusion as they relate to city operations, specifically training, hiring, and outreach. At our next meeting, city staff will present background information related to these three areas. Another piece of the discussions is a listening tour to hear from residents about their experiences and needs related to diversity, inclusion, and city operations. We expect that some of this will happen at committee, and some will happen outside committee, including at meetings convened by residents. For the gatherings convened by residents, there will be opportunities for Alderman outside PANS to participate. Alderman, please let me know if you are interested in participating. Lastly, as is always the case, residents may provide input directly on this topic or any other by contacting Alderman directly and/or making public comment, the opportunity for which exists at every meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other reports and recommendations? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission. We had a meeting last Friday of the full commission. Highlight of that was that the interim Fly Quiet, the IFQ, will be restarting next Monday. Right now, we are in the nightly rotation that we've been, been in for many, many years. The IFQ hits us every other week, so we might be seeing a little increased air traffic over Elmhurst for the next six months or so, I believe that is, until that eases up. Yeah, about, about that much. Also, we had a Fly Quiet Committee meeting, August 20th, and there were four different rotation plans that were honed in on. And each one of those only impacts Elmhurst every third week, so that we're focusing on rotation patterns that are better than the IFQ that we're, we're going into next week. So that's, that's good news, and we're just at a point now where we're really refining that. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Just one question. I don't know if this would be answered by Alderman Dunn as our representative, or City Manager Gorbowski, but there has been requests in the past in regards to having noise monitors placed in the city of Elmhurst for the airplane noise. I was wondering if we submitted those requests. If so, where are they? If not, why not?
Yeah, I can take that one. There was a resident that did bring that up during public comment at the meeting last Friday, wondering about noise monitors for Elmhurst. There is one in North Lake, which is very close to the Elmhurst border, but nothing right now in Elmhurst. And that was answered at the meeting on Friday, that Elmhurst is somewhat newer to the commission, and it, it takes, it's a longer process to get those, and the option of getting a mobile noise monitor is probably the first step, which we will be, continue to examine. And if it seems that that would be a plus for Elmhurst, we will push that.
Alderman Bram.
Yeah, just one follow-up. So it sounds like we have not made a request at this time, but we are considering to make one in the future. Is that accurate?
We were, just a little history on that. We had some interest in a noise monitor from a group of residents prior to IFQ, and once the interim Fly Quiet plan was formulated, that group of residents sort of withdrew their support for the, for the noise monitors. So we tabled that, and with IFQ being active only until next year, it's something that we will look at. So we did request it, and then we withdrew it, because those that wanted it didn't want it anymore. So we will continue to look at that.
Okay. Anyone else? Onto Agenda Item 8. This is an ordinance. This ordinance falls off the agenda as it relates to a consent agenda item that was pulled, so it's no longer relevant for today's meeting. Onto resolutions. Agenda item 9.1 is a resolution. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2020 asphalt patching program for the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. See item 6.12.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Brennan. Discussion. Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, in the body of the report, it said we were going to do the report and the resolution on the same evening, so that is why this is being called out separately, so.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing non-hallars, Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Leader, absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Hayhill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Or is it absent anymore? How's that work?
Unfilled.
Unfilled. Okay. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one vacant, one unfilled.
One vacant, that works. Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion passes. Onto Agenda Item 9.2. It's another resolution. I'd ask Clerk Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional engineering services agreement with Concentric Integration LLC for services related to the citywide fiber optic network project. See item 6.13.
Okay, to put this resolution before council, ask for a motion to approve as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Brennan. Clerk Tamer.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Hayhill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one vacancy.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 9.2 is approved. Now onto Agenda Item 10. Other business. Any other business? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just, I know you had mentioned with regard to Alderman's leader, Alderman Leader's resignation from his post as an alderman in the Second Ward, that we're going to have something, hopefully in the future. I'm not sure when we'll get a chance to see him, but I did want to take this time to, on behalf of the residents of the Second Ward, to thank Alderman Leader for all he's done for the ward, and for how he's helped me in the first few years of being an alderman, and, and then, you know, working very closely with him for the past couple terms. I wanted to mention that, you know, you've heard the term, there's, that person's a man before his time. I think Alderman Leader is a man after his time, and I mean that in all sincerity. And you can tell by the letter that he wrote to convey his resignation, he was, he was able, he had a unique ability to pull centuries of history and literature to really shine light on current issues and make them relevant. So again, I want to just take a quick moment to thank Alderman Leader for his service.
Okay. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. We have a couple of folks on the phone, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Hayhill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one vacancy.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. We adjourn. Thank you.